Least amount of votes on the agenda, but about 2,500 people that actually voted out of 20,000. We need to bring this city up, lift the city up. And by doing, by passing or continuing this discussion, we can bring that to where Newton is proud, proud of all their people, no matter who you are. We have made the first step and I am very welcome to work with Chris for getting something worked up. Just give me a call, that's all I ask. And you know, I'll visit with each and every one of you, you know, on one-on-one or as a group sometime. This is real close to my heart because as a Army veteran, I fought for these very same things that we are fighting for today. Times have changed. Back in the 60s, it was the blacks. Before that, it was the women's that fought for these same rights. Now it's the LGBT community. Let's put an end to it here in Newton. Let's pass something, you know, let's work together to make it the equality and equality of life here in Newton stand out among the whole state. We can do it. Thank you.
Sure.
Come up to the mic.
Hello?
If you could just state your name and address just for the record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Camila Flores. I live at 704 Old Trail Road. I am 15 years old and I attend Newton High. The African-Americans had to sit in separate places on buses and in restaurants. So like you saying, if someone turned us away, that's bringing the whole issue back from the civil rights movement. And that is highly insensitive of you. I respect your right to be a Christian and to be whoever you wish to be. In return, I wish for you to respect everyone else.
Word.
I have faced discrimination, just being a high school student, because I am a lesbian. And your words are so hurtful. You do not understand what it's like to be born and raised and having to realize you're different from others. And you have to figure out how to go through all new changes all over again. And having to deal with people calling you a faggot. People you know turning their backs on you. And knowing that some of your family leave you because of something you simply are. And for someone at their restaurant to turn you away simply for who you are, it's just as horrible as someone turning away an African-American, a woman, a disabled person, or anyone else, because we are human and we all deserve equal rights. And it should be the city's job to provide us all equal rights. Even if you are Christian and you don't agree or whatever with what we are, you don't have to be a part of us, you don't have to like us. We ask that you just let us exist as we are, like every normal human being. You are all human. And actually imagine being kicked out of a place for being ginger. That is one of the stupidest arguments I've ever heard. Imagine not being allowed to be with your friends anymore because you are gay. Imagine having teachers not look at you the same. Or friends and family treating you differently, simply because you are not something they... I lived my life already as a Latina. His mother is an immigrant, dealing with all sorts of discrimination. And now I have another. So your words are extremely hurtful. I live in this town and I love my home because it's all I know. And I love the people here because they are just cutting to me. And this is truly one of the more hurtful things I've ever heard being here. I want to exist and I want to live like everyone else. And that's all I want. And everyone clapping to that makes me realize we have a lot in the way to go.
Good evening ma'am, good evening gentlemen. My name is Aaron Swank. I live here in Newton. Do you need my address?
For the record.
314 West Broadway. I come for you wearing several hats. Some of you might recognize me as your nutrition and family finance agent with Case State Research and Extension.
You're just a Rotary program to me.
Yes, yes sir. Good to see you again. I also come to you as the co-chair of the Healthy Harvey Coalition. I come to you as the founder of the Lambda Health Initiative, which is an initiative that I'm building from the ground up to bring to light issues that exactly are faced tonight for LGBTQ Harvey Countyans. I'd also like to address the elephant in this room, and that is an elephant of privilege. I understand that we all likely face discrimination. And Commissioner McBroom, I'd like to thank you and applaud you for your vulnerability. Because it is no small feat to talk about these issues in any way. What I would challenge anyone in this room who has ever faced any kind of discrimination is not to be dismissive of it, but only put some perspective. Have you ever been told that you don't deserve to live because of who you are? Have you ever been beaten because of who you are, because of what you believe? Have you ever been called, like my young friend said, "faggot"? Have you ever been told that you should commit suicide or at least consider it? Have you ever otherwise been made to feel like you absolutely don't deserve to live? I have. And like my young friend articulated, thank you for your vulnerability. That's intense. No one deserves that for any reason. And while I do agree that it may not be the city's job to govern private businesses and private persons, I do believe in leadership by example. That is the opportunity that we have to make here today and in future with this future conversation. That's important. That's huge. You can see on that map that few rural communities like us have even considered this kind of a process. This is important, pivotal, pioneering work. I'm honored to be here today to speak for it. No words can change your mind. Nothing I can say or anyone else can say can make that happen. It's entirely up to you. You are the leaders of our community. Queer people exist in this community. I exist in this community. And I am honored to serve this community. The difference between me and you is that mostly heteronormative people, as a white, Christian man, sir, you have protections. You can't be fired because you're Christian. You can't be fired because you're male. You can't be fired because you're white. In the state of Kansas, in this city, in this county, I can be fired because I openly identify as a queer American. Regardless of my veteran status, regardless of my contributions to the community, which have been extensive in this year and a half here in the county, things that I'm honored and very privileged to be a part of, I am not protected. I do not enjoy the same protections as most of you. But being here tonight gives me hope that we can and will change that. It gives other communities something to look towards for being inclusive, for being safe, for showing love in our community. To paraphrase Dr. Martin Luther King, darkness cannot stamp out darkness, only light can do that. Hatred will not stamp out hatred, only love can do that. I believe in love and only love can save the world. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I really respect you and, you know, having you speak to the Rotary Club, it's obvious you're well-versed, but here's something I don't understand. It's like what I heard Clint say, I don't think he meant any disrespect. Yet, yet she heard disrespect. I mean, how do you, how do you bridge that gap? I've been trying to do it for years. I'm really involved in Rotary Youth Exchange. I've sent and received somewhere north of 700 kids coming in and out. Quite frankly, 65, 70% of the kids that we get from other countries now are gay. For some reason, they're the ones that want to venture out. And I think those kids are well-received in our school system by the kids. The kids seem to kind of have it figured out. But, but, but what I don't understand is how to bridge the gap between what she heard and what he said, in my eyes, and no disrespect at all. And I totally, I totally feel bad, you know, that you have to go, that you have to feel that way. Do you have any thoughts?
I sure do, yes sir. Thank you for asking. That's a great question. And I think it's partially done by doing exactly what we're doing here. Having the conversation, asking the questions, having the courage to tell your story and to tell your story. While I agree, Commissioner McBroom, you absolutely meant no disrespect. What we have to realize as human beings is that it's not our intentions that matter. It's what we do. None of us, very rarely, truly, do any of us mean to hurt other people. And when we do, we feel badly. Of course we do. The important thing to me, and I don't want to speak for either other party or any of the parties that have spoke here today, the important thing to me is that we acknowledge it. Regardless of our personal biases, regardless of where those biases come from, we acknowledge that we as human beings are flawed. None of us are perfect. And again, it is the job of the leadership, of any and all leadership, to lead by example and to protect the citizens which we were voted and elected and hired to represent and to serve. We are not here, I am not here in Harvey County to serve my own personal interests. If I were, everybody would be at the Y right now instead of here and be working out together. But I know that's not going to happen. We need to meet people where they are. We need to have these conversations. And we need to be calm and we need to, our intent needs to be in love, not in differences. We have to do better to navigate those differences. The only way we're going to do that is if we have these conversations. Did that answer your question, sir?
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
I'll be the first in line to admit that I'm a flawed human being, trust me.
I'll be the second, sure.
All right. So you had said something about that you can be fired for being those things that you described. How, where is it that says that you, whoever has the right to fire you for that? I don't understand that.
So that may be a legal question that may be outside of my legal understanding, which is very minimal because I'm not an attorney. But my understanding is that it doesn't say that they, it doesn't have to say they have the right. All it says is that I don't have the right potentially to argue it. So I can be let go for any reason that isn't rigidly protected under the law. So because of my sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, I can be let go without explanation, potentially. It doesn't mean it's going to happen. That's part of privilege. Privilege doesn't guarantee us anything. So even having rules and expectations in place, for example, from my state administration, just because my state administration says we're not going to fire you, Aaron, because of your sexual orientation or gender identity and expression, that does not mean that I won't be. It doesn't make sense. It's hard to explain because it's a very gray area, sir, and we don't like to navigate the gray area. We like things to be black and white. I think that's a part of the reason why we have rules, regulations and laws, to make that gray area easier to navigate or obsolete. We can't do that to people because lots of people function in that gray area. And in fact, more people function in the gray area than they do in the extremes. Whether it's the extremes of the spectrum of human sexuality, the extremes of religion, the extremes of white versus black skin, it doesn't matter. Most people function somewhere in between. Those protections, the protections we're talking about here tonight, offer those protections from people. So that those of us who live in the gray area can enjoy the same privileges and protections that everyone else does.
So Aaron, if I can speak for just a moment.
Yes, sir.
You seem very reasonable, so I enjoy that. And I would like to have a time to sit down with you and I and enjoy coffee together, if you're a coffee drinker. I'm not a fitness guy though, so. But I would sit down and have coffee if I've done it with Christine on more than one occasion. I, yes, definitely meant no disrespect by anything I said tonight. And I do just want to say that as a child growing up with red hair, I was called ginger and made fun of on more than one occasion and I'm...
Were you called a faggot?
No, but I was called a ginger, which is the same thing that you called me standing up here, which is a slang word for people with red hair, started by South Park when they said that gingers have no souls. So I just want to say that.
Actually, sir, there's a lot of history behind that kind of discrimination, just, you're absolutely right.
Sure. So I'm just saying, I have experienced that. And I do remember at times going home as a kid and thinking, I don't want to go back to public school anymore. I went to Pleasant Valley Middle School and I went to Heights High School after that. And I said that I didn't want to go back to school on days when I was much younger because of that. I think it helped me now in life when I have much broad shoulders, when I'm called a bigot and everything else for being an evangelical Christian person. Just what I'm wondering though is, I guess I would like to know a way to help people understand that I do feel strongly that the city needs to stay in their lane and make sure that we're providing services to what it is that we're responsible for. And I mean, goodness, I said it, if somebody could come up here and tell me tonight that their water has not been functioning properly because the city refused to do anything about it, Suzanne and I will go over to their house tomorrow and make sure that it's straightened out. And I, but I don't know how, I mean, right without that happening, how can I show that that's actually what I would do? So if that's the case, if somebody has been discriminated against by the PD, I'll join Chief Dunleavy and go visit and hear from that person. I would care to know that. But I haven't been told, so it's hard for me to say we need to do something about something that I haven't been told about. I'm not ever going to say it doesn't happen. Because I wouldn't want to say for a person that doesn't attend church, that they've never been, that the church people don't get discriminated against. Because when I'm called all those things online and everywhere else and, you know what? I have to be honest with you, what does the next two weeks look like for me as an individual being in the community? Am I going to be called things? Are things going to happen at my house? You know, so those things are real, right? It's real on both sides. And I don't want to dismiss anyone, so I want it to be on the record. I don't want to dismiss anybody's complaints. And if there is in fact something that has happened, let's not wait for an ordinance to be passed. If the city has not provided services that were obligated, that's what we're responsible for here tonight. When I took the oath of office, I did it to provide to the citizens of this community, to provide the services that were to provide. So if somebody in this community is not receiving those services, let's not wait for an ordinance to be passed. Let's do something about it now. However, it would surprise many of my evangelical friends here this evening, some of whom I know and some of whom I don't know. I would actually be in favor of us doing something to make sure that in the future, there is no one from the LGBTQ community that is discriminated against in any way when it comes to city-related services or hiring and firing of city-related employees. If somebody walks in the door and I find out that they're not hired, even though they're more qualified for the job and they're not hired because they're transgender, I would be upset about that. And I would be down in city manager's office talking to them about why that happened. I want the most qualified people for the job. So I don't know how else to say that and then be told that I'm a bigot when I'm trying my best, but my world here in Newton is largely surrounded by people from the church community who haven't ever expressed those things. So Aaron, I would enjoy a conversation with you sometime and coffee to understand better, to know how we can do better, but, you know, I don't know. So help me out if you can. If not, we'll enjoy coffee sometime at Norm's or Hojo's or wherever you pick.
Sure.
I did that. I didn't buy your coffee, right?
You're right. It's a hard question to add and a hard road to take on both sides. But we've got to move forward and by starting the conversations now, we can move forward.
Yeah. And Camila, I would just encourage you that if something's happened at school to talk to the school board about it. There's, I know Mrs. Becker was here. I don't know if she left with her child or not, but she was here. But if there's something that happened at school, the school board is responsible for that. Not, I mean, we can't, we can't enforce things on Newton High School. However, we can with school resource officers. So if school resource officers have discriminated, let us know. Right. Let's take a conversation. So I don't know. Aaron, help me out if you can. If you want to stay for coffee sometime, I'm glad.
Yes to both. And really, sir, I think you answered your own question. By experiencing, by being open about the discrimination you've faced, think about how that makes you feel. It makes you feel like...
And I am a hope issue here.
Your curse here, so it probably makes you feel bad.
Yes.
And, and sir, in terms of your discrimination, and not that it matters when it happened and doesn't happen anymore, but that discrimination and those hateful comments that I mentioned, that I've experienced, those have happened within the last two years. And I'm not...
And we can't regulate speech though.
Right, and I'm not saying that either.
Yeah, that's...
But what I, what I am challenging and insisting, as someone who's a community leader myself, not to the degree that any of you are, for sure, but I do have the privilege of being a community leader, is again, leading by example. It's not necessarily a matter of dictating behavior. I do believe it is a matter of setting example, of giving those local businesses, this is the example we want to set. This is what we want our community to look like. That's the job, at least in part, of local government. And as we're talking right now, we can only do that together.
Fair. I would be willing to say that we can set the example for it, but I would never want to say that we're going to force a business to do something. That's just my independence and thinking of, just same way with the golf cart ordinance that we talked a little bit ago. You know, I was one of the biggest, biggest complainers about the way that ordinance was originally written because I didn't want anybody driving a golf cart during the day to have to go down to Kansas Golf and Turf and spend $2,000 putting a turn signal on their golf cart. So I said, scratch all that. I want to be able to drive a golf cart anywhere they want in Sand Creek. I just don't believe it's the government's job to impose restrictions on people that are, I believe, are freedoms. So if a police officer or EMS personnel or anyone is, if they have used derogatory language towards someone in the community, I would like to know. That's not, that's not the values that we have back posted on our wall and they're not falling into that line of city employees that we would expect. And so, I mean, I'm open and I'm willing. I just, I haven't heard. So I would like to hear if there is in fact those cases. I think most people think because I'm a pastor that I'm going to be the most hateful person and don't care about it, and that's not the case.
Do you understand where that comes from, sir?
It comes from history of the church being that way.
Yes.
And I'm saddened by that. And I don't like that. I mean, I'll say tonight, and I know that's the case. I know some of those people here in this community, but I'm not one of them. And I'm automatically lumped into this group of being like them, and in fact, I'm not.
Changing our viewpoints regardless of what side you're on is hard. It takes time. So I want to work on that together, sir.
I would appreciate conversation with you and other people who have felt that they've been discriminated against. Let's, I would like to hear that. You know, I really would. So thank you, sir.
Aaron, I have another comment. I'd like...
I'm popular tonight, okay?
It's been brought up several times here about private business and the city dictating what they should or shouldn't do or have to do and that kind of thing. So as, as a private business owner myself, over the last 30-some years, I've hired hundreds of people of every color, black, white, Hispanic, you name it. I've had gays, I've had people of all persuasions work for me in our organization. And I've always been just a little puzzled. And I know here just in the last two or three years, this, this topic has come up. And it has always just amazed me. I have never once thought about firing any employee because of their sexual orientation or the color of their skin. It's like, seriously? We're here to do a job. And not only that, I want to empower all of our employees to feel like they're in a family, that they have a place to fit. And it seems to me that's what all of our employers, that's the prism whereby which they should view their employees. And I too am one of them, that I don't want the city to dictate to me and to my organization what I do and don't have to do, which I'm going to do anyways as a matter of principle, as a matter of honesty and as a matter of what I believe in, of treating you and everybody in here the same. It doesn't matter where you come from. I too have been discriminated against when I was in, in high school, to a severe level. And I know what that's like too. And you know what? Today, I firmly believe that our Creator created all of us equal and that we're all loved equally and we should love each other equally too. And I just, and I'm glad we're having this conversation. And I, it is a tough one. It really is. And it's not going to go away. We can, we can say that all we want. Well, let's just deal with it later.
That's right, sir.
So we'll keep talking about it. I can assure you, whether we want to or not.
And I'll be at that table, sir.
Yeah, I know you will. And I appreciate that. There is another young man over here.
Hello, my name is Diego Agalar Malanato and I live at 492 Second Street. When I came here today, I did not think that I would be speaking, but here we are. And I was actually informed of this meeting because I haven't been to one of these commissioner meetings before by my, I guess, employer Roger Nugent. He runs Super Collider Computers in North Newton and he is a gay man. And I am not coming here as a member of the LGBTQ community, but rather as an ally. And I want to try and bridge some of the tension that I felt between both groups, you know, here tonight. And first I want to speak to Commissioner McBroom. I commend you for your vulnerability and expressing past discrimination that has happened to you. And I did not come here with the intent to vilify anybody, you know, as being white or straight or Christian. And even if you are all three of those things, that doesn't exclude you from being a member of the LGBTQ community either. Take a look at Mayor Pete Buttigieg, who ran for president, you know, of the United States. And he is, you know, white and Christian, but he is also a gay man, you know? And like, we need to try and bridge this sort of division. And one viewpoint of yours, Commissioner McBroom, was that the city should not intervene in private affairs. And that is a perfectly valid viewpoint to have, you know? Like, it could, like, from some perspectives, it could present an overreach of government into the affairs of private businesses. But as the law currently stands, you know, people can be protected from... And when we say protected, we don't mean that the government is trying to tell private businesses, hey, you have to hire this many gay people, you have to hire this many black people, you have to hire this many minorities, you know? That's not what we're saying. But, and what you were saying is that you don't see the precedent for this kind of ordinance being established because you personally haven't heard any complaints from the LGBTQ community. And what we are trying to establish is a way for you to hear complaints from the LGBTQ community. Because what we have heard today is that right now, there is no way for those people to appeal to the government and enjoy the same kind of protections that other protective classes have, like being discriminated against based on race, on religion, et cetera. You know, those people, like, if they are fired, you know, for being black, you know, they can make an appeal. They can settle things through meditation. It's not just a straight, I'll sue you, I get $10,000. No, that's not how it works. They go through the courts, they try to settle where they actually discriminated against, you know? We try to figure things out as clear as we can, you know? And if that was the case, and we do, we will try to make exceptions for like religious organizations. We're not going to try and limit anybody's, you know, religious freedoms, you know? Like America was founded on people fleeing persecution based on, you know, what religion they practiced, you know? There are like a lot of Protestants in this area, you know? And they had to face really... in this area, you know, and they had to face religious persecution back in like European countries. And that's what, not what we're trying to do. We are trying to grant LGBTQ communities the same kind of protections that other protected races have. Because as it stands right now, if we wanna maintain equality, we A, either remove all protections dealing with, you know, races and religions to keep it equal of the LGBTQ community as they have no protection against being fired from a private entity based solely on their sexual orientation. You know, they don't have that protection, protection and other groups do. Or we can grant them those same protections that these other groups have, you know, because historically they have been, you know, a downtrodden group of people face of the AIDS crisis and not being able to get married, you know, and a lot of victim, uh, they've been victims of many hate crimes, you know, and it seems to me that historically, there's precedent that they should be a protected class similar to, you know, black people or Hispanic people or, uh, you know, just like these other protected, uh, like other protected groups that we have, that they enjoy these protections from the government. The government will say, hey, you can tell us if you've been fired from a private institution, you know, because like if you suspect or if you know it was because of your race or because of your religion, you can tell us and we will try to mediate with, you know, the private institution will try to figure out if that's actually the case. If we find it was, then we'll, some kind of penalty or institution, unless of course, you know, it is, you know, based on religious freedoms because, again, I would like to reiterate, we don't want to trample on freedom of religious expression. That's, that's not what we're trying to do. But these other groups have these protections and the, like religious groups and racial groups have these protections. But the LGBTQ group of people don't have these protections and that is inherently unequal. You know, in order to keep things equal, we need to either A, get rid of protections, uh, you know, for discrimination from private institutions, you know, we need to get rid of those for races and religions to keep it, you know, so that no group has protections and that would be equal. Or we can grant protections for these LGBTQ people, you know, to these private, and that would make it equal and people would have those protections, you know, and that's what I'm trying to say. Right now, the situation is inherently unequal for LGBTQ people because people of races and not just minorities, you know, like a person can be working at a all-black business, it could be a white person, you know, and they can get fired, you know, and they maybe suspect the reason was because they were white, you know, and they can, uh, they can complain to the government and say, I, I was fired for just being white. They have that protection, you know, like it, it's, or like, like a person can be fired for being Christian, you know, like you said, you mentioned being discriminated against because you're a pastor, you know, you're affiliated with the church group. And they can, like even though that they're a majority in this town, they could still be fired based solely on their religion and they can appeal to the government and say, I was discriminated against on the basis of my religion, you know, and I wanna settle things, you know, I want to, uh, just kinda discourage this kind of behavior among institutions of men because if all these private institutions, you know, are allowed to discriminate, well, and like I said, when I say allowed to discriminate, I don't mean that they have the right to be discriminated, you know, it's not written in the law. But the LG, like they don't have the right to discriminate against LGBTQ people. It's more like LGBTQ people don't have a right to complain to the government and make these issues known, to make discrimination in the city known. So if we will disavow religious discrimination and racial discrimination, but not discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity, then that is unequal. It, it's inherently so. And I want Newton to be a place of equality, you know, and I think, you know, like you said, from what I heard here today, you seem to be a reasonable person.
I hope so.
Yes, yes. And I, and I hope that I'm coming across that way, uh, too. Uh, thank you. And I guess I'll be the third person to say that I'm flawed up here.
Yes.
But, um, I come here bearing no ill will. I just wanna explain the perspective of the, you know, uh, LGBTQ community, you know, and your, your viewpoint that the city should not interfere in private institutions is, you know, a completely valid, you know, a viewpoint. But as it stands right now, the city is interfering by giving protections to, uh, you know, racial groups, religious groups, but LGBTQ groups are excluded.
Well, not specifically the city, the federal government.
Right, the federal government, but the city has to abide by those.
And so Diego, I just wanna say, and if you have more to share, please do. I just wanna make sure that we do understand, as I've mentioned tonight, and I do feel very strongly about this, that if somebody is being discriminated against in those services that we're responsible for that I mentioned earlier, then I would like to know because they, there is a process to, to remedy that if they are. And I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want us to completely dismiss the matter that we never hear of it again. I would just like to wait until we find out what federal government and state government decides to do part of that. That would be very interesting to me to find out is that the Kansas, um, see, I don't even know the name of it. The Kansas Freedom for Religious Practices or whatever it was, that, that act would in fact be changed if the federal government said something different. Am I correct? I mean, federal government overrules what state authority.
Yeah, I mean, obviously if someone had a Title VII protection, they wouldn't be able to fall back on that state. Although there is a federal, uh, federal law that's similar, I, I'd put that answer to you in writing. We can, we can talk about those details for sure.
I mean, federal government can help us decide what to do next. If I have, if that's what I'm saying, I'm gonna understand that correctly.
Well, I think that, uh, well, number one, you said there, you mentioned that there is a pathway for people who have been discriminated against.
For city-related services.
For city-related services, yes. But there is a pathway, uh, for, uh, you know, racial and religious groups to appeal against discrimination for private institutions as well. And that same right is not granted to LGBTQ people. You know, that, that's the point that we're trying to make, that even though LGBTQ people have, you know, representation in the public sector and are very much, you know, thankful that they have that protection, you know, for city services, that if the city is extending protections, uh, you know, for private institutions for racial groups or religious groups, then those same protections against private institutions should also be instituted for LGBTQ groups, you know, to make things equal. Because as things are right now, they're inherently unequal, you know, and I think, and I hope that you'll help us, that you'll join us in this fight against inequality because you said, you mentioned, if you see a person, you know, who is like considered for a city position, you know, and they're qualified, but they're being discriminated against based on their sexual identity or sexual orientation, you know, then you said you would stand up for them, you know.
I would because I want the very best working for the city.
Right.
And I don't care what their background is. I want the very best working for the city.
But the city is also made up of private institutions. We have a lot of.
City government, so.
Right, right, city government. But a, a city as a whole, that's why we're here. We're all residents of Newton. I'm a, I'm a proud resident of Newton. And I want my city to be welcoming to all people, you know, like, and like especially, well, especially, I mean equally, but like that, that, that same acceptance extends to, you know, Christian people. It extends to white people, it extends to males. I'm not trying to, you know, overthrow the majority or, you know, I, I want us to all, you know, live together and like even if we disagree on some points, you know, that we can still like look out for each other's best interests. And I think that, uh, if you're interested in uh, serving like the LGBTQ community's best interest, that you would, you know, at least consider looking over this ordinance. And we, and like looking through this booklet here, it does have exemptions for religious reasons, you know, like for religious establishments. So we wouldn't try to infringe on your right to practice your religion. You know, religion historically and culturally is very important, you know, uh, and we would, like, we would have exemptions for that. But as it stands right now, the LGBTQ community cannot complain to you if, you know, they're discriminated against by a private institution, the same way that, you know, racial groups can appeal to you if they're discriminated against by a private institution or the same way that religious groups can appeal to you, you know, if they're discriminated against by a private institution.
Well, just for clarification, they wouldn't, they would not appeal to us. They went to the federal government. So that's, and that's what I'm saying about, I think we need to let the federal government do what they do and we need to do what we do here. And that's, I mean, that's, and it's not because I don't wanna serve these people. I made that clear tonight that I do. It's just that I want us to be responsible for what we're responsible for. And if it takes us saying that we want businesses to treat everybody fairly, I mean, I'm in support of that and I, like liberally, I, I build cabinets and furniture and if a transgender person or someone, um, that's different than me that, an atheist or anybody called me and they wanted me to build furniture for them, if they have money that's legal, I mean, I'll do work for them. I, I don't have desire not to. I, because I think everybody needs to be treated fairly and if somebody really likes my furniture that much, I would love for them to have.
Right, but right now, people aren't being treated fairly because the federal government, as you put it, is extending protections to racial groups and religious groups, but not to LGBTQ groups. And that's the point that I'm trying to get across.
Thank you. For the sake of time, let's, uh, does anybody else have anything to say? Come, come on up and state your name.
Thank you, Diego.
Thank you, Diego. Did very well.